Let's call the special called session of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners, June 22, 2023, meeting to order. We will begin with a prayer by Commissioner Vandergriff and the pledge of allegiance by Sheriff Barker.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much, Lord, for the opportunity to come into your presence, Lord. We thank you, Lord, for the blessings that you poured out so richly on each one of us, the blessings of your mercy and your grace, your forgiveness, and the blessing of salvation, Lord. Lord, we just also want to pour out to you our hearts, Lord, and that you would lead us and that you would guide us and you would direct us again in conducting the business of this county, Lord. Please be with each one of us in the decisions that will be made tonight, in Jesus Christ's most holy and righteous name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item we have is the approval of the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. Commissioner Val.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we use the tourism fund balance, the hotel motel tax, for the ACEDA donation and the Chamber of Commerce donation. If I am correct, that brings that total to $180,000? Robbie, is that correct? Is my math right on that?
No.
One fifty-four.
One fifty-four. One fifty-four, five hundred.
One fifty-four, five hundred. And for those savings that it will allow into the general fund to be used for an increase to an employee's salary increases other than the sheriff's office, and I think that will bring that up to seven percent. Is that correct, Robbie? Thereabouts?
Yes. That would fund a seven percent.
And that is my motion, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Commissioner Val, then seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Commissioner Mays.
Mr. Chairman, in addition to that, for, and I'm in support of the motion as far as the $154,000 coming out of the tourism fund, what I would like to see is, I know Budget Committee approved $460,000 for ARP money to tackle the deficit for EMS. I would like to add to that amount $50,000. If I'm right, Robbie, that would allow them to get the two percent addition that the employees are getting across the board as well.
Yes, sir.
It would... So I'd like to, if you're open to amending that motion.
Absolutely.
Just a second. Okay with that?
Okay.
Commissioner McCain.
Robbie, why are, why is all this saying percentage raise for county employees with the exception of sheriff's office?
Because they have already received a 13% increase, average of 13% for the, and they're not asking for any additional increases.
When did they get 13%?
That was probably the, one of the things the Budget Committee passed this year. They presented their budget with earlier the one point, it was more than that. We cut 260,000 out with ARP funding, but with $1.5 million in increases and with compensation plan, longevity pay, merit raises, and that was approved by the Budget Committee. It's in this budget currently.
So one department got 13%, and all the other departments are going to get seven?
Yes. Right now they're at five, but yes. That's the motion on the floor.
So is there additional then for the sheriff's department after the 13%?
No.
That's just the total. Okay, what would it cost to give all employees 13%?
Let me look that up real quick. Let Commissioner Val jump in while Robbie's looking that up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I think Sheriff Barker probably can answer the question I was going to answer. I'll yield my time to the sheriff.
So Commissioner McCain, I can't answer what takes to get everyone 13%, but this is what I presented at the workshop. This is what we talked about with the Budget Committee, and it's, and it, to me, I've made the arguments time and time again, but it, at the end of the day, these men and women that are in this room today, right, you guys pay us to do violence on your behalf. We've talked about that, and when they talk about doing something different for us as opposed to other county employees, at the end of the day, we are different. And from a sense that you guys already treat us different because county policy applies to us unless it don't, and then we fall under civil service. No other department falls under that civil service. So unfortunately, we are different, and this isn't the men and women of this department, of this office, being greedy. It's not the men and women of this department asking for, to be treated special when it comes to pay, but as it stands, this is market-driven. Everyone around us is doing these things, to the point that I would say this. We put out a position for an SRO that was going to start out at roughly $38,000. Three days later on, county put one out for $51,000. And their insurance, they listed it, so we got to compare it to what they were offering as part of their total package, and their insurance was less expensive than ours as well. So everyone around us is paying more. So it's really market-driven as much as anything else. But I've sat up here and pleaded and made the argument that this is what we have to do. Public safety is expensive, and it's the right thing to do, to be quite frank with you. We ask a lot out of these men and women, particularly the ones that are back in, back in the units and those that are patrolling the streets. I gave the example of we've got eight people or seven people right now currently, their lives potentially are changed forever because they come in contact with Hep C positive blood through fighting. And now they're having to go through a series of tests. And these same folks have kids. They're taking this stuff home to their families. Guys, we're different. And you know, I used the ugly sister analogy last time, but it's the truth. We may not like it. We may hate it. We may feel it's unfair, but we're not losing other people to other counties, other county employees to other counties over pay. We're experiencing that with sheriff's office, and it's because everyone around us pays more. And that's a simple fact. Now, if we want to take a step back and not, not make public safety a priority, that's for this body to decide, not us, because we're still going to come to work, and we're going to do the absolute best we can. And that is up to you guys. So this, to me, is kind of old news. The 13%, that number is an average. Some will get more, some will get less. And when I presented at the workshop, I can't remember if you were present or not, but we talked about, I asked that we present this as is or be passed as is, because it's three incremental, very small raises as, when you look at them individually, but together it gives the potential. And we're going to reward good work. We're going to reward stellar opportunities. And I'm asking you guys to support this tonight. And not only that, but honestly, I feel like myself and our staff are worth more than what we've asked for, but we did it within the confines of looking out for the entire county. We didn't want to see a tax increase either. A lot of us live here. I'm a unique beast in the fact that I'm elected official here, and I'm funded off taxpayer dollars, but I don't like paying more. I don't, I get it, but I will pay more for public safety. And so with that being said, we showed a way, and we, and with Robbie's help, Robbie helped us tighten it up, but we laid out the framework of where it didn't require a tax increase. Now, we think, honestly, as it stands today, and let me just kind of leave you guys with these last two notes, as it stands today, we're now trying to get within roughly $5,000 of our surrounding agencies as opposed to being behind tent as I stand here at this very moment, right? That's really about where it's at. And on top of that, Commissioner Wondell asked a question of me in another meeting, and we went back and looked, and we have turned in money literally every year. So we're good stewards with our money. And you guys are going to have to, have to trust us with that. Now, the final numbers aren't in for this past year, but it's been anywhere from a couple hundred. One year we had 1.3 million, and those aren't, those are not my numbers. I got those from Robbie. So we're going to do the right thing every single time. And I want to remind those of you who are here and those who are new, when we asked for unit one, the minute we didn't need it, we shut it down and returned the money. We're going to do the right thing every single time, and I hope you guys will support us in this tonight.
And also, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to answer Commissioner McCain's question a little more specifically. And Captain Sharp, if you're here, you can correct me on this. What the sheriff's office is actually asking for is a pay plan. It's not necessarily everybody's getting a percentage pay increase. It's, a lot of it's going to be based on longevity and on merit. So when you hear 13%, that's an average. It's not each individual person getting that.
The, we have people getting as low as 5%. There's a lot getting six or seven. The one that, probably the top is around 18%. That is the newest people and to attract future people, because we do currently have about 12 positions in the department. So the higher percentage is basically bringing people in.
Thank you. You have a number?
Yeah, so 13% for the whole, for the rest of the county would be around 1.6 million, which some we've already funded if we, with a 5% and if it goes to seven. But like for general fund, if we at seven, it costs another $400,000 to get to 13, but that's not counting all the rest of the departments.
Wait. An additional $400,000?
Just for general fund alone.
Just for general fund?
Yes.
Then you got the highway on top of that?
Excuse me?
You got the highway department?
EMS, library, solid waste, tourism, highway, and ACTB all have to support their own.
Okay, with the amendment that was to the original motion for EMS, what does that put them at?
The amendment with the original motion was for EMS to get a 7% raise, additional 40, 40 or 50,000 with a small surplus budget, like $5,000 possibly, with a 7% raise. So that'd be $510,000 of ARP funds, and their employees would, with the no, with their no increase budget, which is no additional employees and 7% raise. Which is a really, I mean, I've worked here 30 years. I don't remember us ever getting a 7% raise. Not many fives or fours.
No, but, and I don't have a problem with sheriff's office, and I believe everything you told me there, Sheriff. But it is, I've talked to some other county employees, and they want to know why, you know, why is one department getting more than the other? And we've never, we've never singled out departments and given a pay raise or any increase in salary or anything else.
I agree, but if you are watching surrounding counties, this is kind of the norm right now. This has happened in a lot of counties. Roan County, Knox County did the same thing recently. So it's not, this is something, I mean, I understand we're trying to keep up. I mean, we do want to have sheriff's department, and we would lose a lot of employees, I think, if we didn't, you know.
Commissioner McCain, it's market-driven. That's the, that's the primary focus, but at the end of the day, listen, I, we can do all the ride-alongs we want. We can do all the walkthroughs through the jail, but there are just things, guys, that you're not going to see, or it's going to be luck that you're there at the right time in a 24-hour period each and every day. We're using, we're using Narcan every other day. I can promise you, my corrections deputies are fighting about every day. As I said, the jail is a, is a town of 400 people, and everybody's bad, including the mayor, right? And it's, it's just a different animal. And if we want the best that we can get to provide public safety, who's going to make wise decisions? We're going to have to, and again, I want to, I want to, I want to stress that we're not keeping up. We're just trying to get close. We don't want to lose the taillights as it's going over the hill. We're just trying to get within, in, within $5,000 of what they're doing around us for the simple fact that we think that if we can at least be competitive with culture and environment, we can make a difference. We've got a lot of things going on. Anderson County is growing. And if we're, particularly when it comes to tourism and industry, I mean, I think, I think the first thing we have to do is start with having a safe community if we're asking people to come visit, stay, and invest millions of dollars into industry. Now, again, we're always held at a higher standard, and we should be. We absolutely should be.
The only part that bothers me is the same person that writes your office checks is sitting there and saying, hmm, you know, why didn't I get that kind of a raise? And we've got, you know, a lot of county employees. We're probably the second-largest employer in the county.
I would agree with that. So, so to that point, I would welcome any county employee that would like a transfer to come on.
Good applications today.
We had, we had a job fair today, and it's really that simple. I had, I had a employee in one unit wanted to know why their pay wasn't the same as, as someone on patrol. And I explained it very, and I was serious. If you don't want to work Monday through Friday in your current position, come on. If you want to, if you want to work rotating shifts in patrol, come on. We'll get you to the academy, and we'll, and we'll put you in a marked unit after you're trained up. I mean, guys, it's, it's, it's just a different beast. It's the ugly sister.
So Robbie, $400,000 would get every county employee, or county general fund, and then it'd be up to the highway department and school department or whatever that are in different funds to fund anything above the 5% or the 7%.
Well, they're funding the wrong 5% and 7% currently, but, right. That's just what it would be additionally for a general fund, which is the biggest fund. But from zero, what we're at currently, to a 13%, it's $1.6 million for all the funds.
For all funds?
Yeah.
And 1.4 just for the sheriff's office?
That's what we used for already, yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, could, the motion now is to approve budget as submitted?
No, this is just a motion to increase the pay raise from 5% to 2% and use tourism fund balance, right?
Yes.
And then also to...
And then the amendment was to add 50,000?
Yeah, go from 460 to 510 for the ARP money, taillights and MS to get to 7%.
Chairman, can I just ask for clarification? Because you said fund balance, tourism fund balance, and I believe Commissioner Val, you said hotel motel tax. So could we, could I get clarification on exactly what, how these funds are going to be obtained?
What I intended was, the balance you have comes from the hotel motel tax? The money you have?
Our fund, our fund is funded by the hotel motel tax.
Okay, that's what I meant.
So you want to take all of the hotel motel tax?
I want to take the money, $154,000, your fund balance, to make the ACEDA donation and the chamber donation.
Out of the fund balance for one year or every year from now on?
Like the $900,000 that you have in the bank?
Yes.
That money?
After the, after the sale?
Well, it would be this, it would be this year.
That will be for one, you're saying for one year? Because this is a reoccurring expense, and you want to fund it for one year?
Yeah, we could always come back next year and do the same thing.
And I would just ask for clarification from Jay and from Robbie, because currently the private act says that the funds are to be used for tourism, and the Anderson 10% is to go to the Anderson County Chamber. And I'm sorry, because I mean, I've just been kind of caught a little off guard about this. I know it's been talked about, and I am not, I do not want to stand up here and argue against raises for the employees, especially with this sea of gray behind me. These men and women work very hard. I acknowledge that, and I'm not going to stand up here and say that they don't, by no means whatsoever. But, and I know it's very easy to look at those funds and the hotel motel tax and say, wow, that's easy money to use. Let's balance our budget. But those funds are an investment. And I know we're in a situation now because we sold the building, and then there's excess, and I would be agreeable for one year. But if you continue to take those funds away, those funds are an investment in this community. The hotel motel tax was created by the state legislators for counties to reinvest into their communities and increase their taxes. So property tax that the hotels pay, sales tax that they generate, those are the funds, $5 million a year for the county. That's what goes back and provides future funds. If you don't grow, you die. If we're not continuing to grow our economy and grow our county, then you're not going to have next year or the next year or the next year. Every year, every month, Robbie reports sales tax. You all pay attention to those numbers. You pay attention if they go up. You pay attention if they go down. That's very important to you all. Some of that sales tax is driven from tourism, a large, I would say, a large majority of it. So that's my only, that's what I'm going to stand up here and argue for my department and for that fund, to say this money is an investment. I mean, Commissioner Isabel has said it over and over. You get a return on that investment, and that return increases, and that return is what allows you to give increases down the road. You take that investment away. We've already spent less money this year on advertising than we spent last year, and we're seeing it in our numbers. Our numbers on our visitation to our website, our hotel mental tax has gone flat. We're not in COVID. We benefited from COVID. We're not in that anymore. We have flattened out. So that's the only thing that, I mean, I'm not, again, I don't want to stand up here and say that the county employees don't deserve 15% or the sheriff's deputies don't deserve it or the ambulance department. That's not what I'm saying at all. I don't want to stand up here and argue. I feel like I'm really, put in a really bad situation, an awkward situation right now, especially with, like I said, with this sea of green behind me. These men and women work every day very hard. So we personally experienced an emergency yesterday that our EMT has responded to.
I understand what you're saying, and I don't think you are trying to disrespect anybody at all. And maybe next year we wouldn't have to use these funds again, but this board does have that discretion to do so. And I agree that the tourism funds are an investment, but I believe the employees of our county are a bigger investment.
I agree. I mean, I agree with that. I would just, I mean, you have a private act in place at this point that says where the funds are supposed to be used. So that would be the only thing is, I would just like an opinion as to where, if giving money to industrial development is considered tourism development.
Mayor Frank.
Just real quickly on the economic development issue. Just as a reminder, economic development is linked with tourism. And I'm going to give you an example at our industry appreciation lunch. I met the new local president of SL Tennessee, and I was asking him about, you know, how things are going at SL Tennessee, and he relayed to me that last year during a worker shortage, that they brought 200 employees, 200 workforce from Memphis and put them in hotels here. And a lot of industry, a lot of the heads in the beds are linked to economic development and to industry. When they come to train, we have global, two of the top global automotive manufacturers here in Anderson County. We have Eishen, we have SL Tennessee, we have a whole host of industries that they bring in their folks. So tourism or hotel business is not just linked to ads and Southern Living. And I mean, Stephanie does a great job of doing that advertising, but hotels are also linked to your industry and your commercial operations. So it does, I do think what you've proposed is a, is a natural fit. So I just wanted to speak on that.
That was one of the balances that we saw during one of the Budget Committee meetings. I was using that as a reference.
I don't think you, but you also mentioned hotel motel tax. That's tied to tourism, economic development. I think there's no question at all that you can use the proceeds from the sale to fund that 154. I wrote an opinion on this. Gatsby 54 identifies that special revenue code and says the county legislative body can do what they want to with the proceeds from that sale. I'm talking about everything above, the maintenance, the profit from that sale. That's a cleaner issue right there than delving into the hotel motel tax. We're going to have to make a connection to tourism, economic development together with that.
Has the closing occurred yet, Robbie, on the sale?
Yeah, that's not...
Okay.
I saw an email, the mayor emailed about that this week, and he didn't give an exact date for the closing.
That is, I'm sorry, but I'm showing on tourism, what's your current balance there, Robbie?
600,000.
Where's the 900 coming from?
I think that's...
Including the, what you said?
The sale of the building? That's a much cleaner issue right there, to take the 154 from the proceeds of that building to take care of the raises. That's clearly within the purview of the county legislative body.
Well, it's not, it's not really taking care of the raises. You're saying pay the ACEDA donation, and then what you were going to pay ACEDA out of the general fund is what takes care of the raises.
But you were, your plan was to use that money you'd normally spend for a ACEDA donation for the county employee raises.
Correct.
I say, take a step out of that. You don't need to do that. Take the profits from the sale of the building, minus what the tourism fund has been out through repayment of that and the maintenance repairs, and you're going to have plenty left over from that. That's going to cover your 154. That's going to cover the employee raises without having to worry about the ACEDA fund. We'll have the money already to do that, might even have the money over again. What's the normal ACEDA? What are we talking about? Donations?
Mr. Chairman, is this appropriate to even have this dialogue like this? I, I mean, it's, we're talking six one way, half a dozen the other. We're asking, the chamber gets 10% of the hotel motel tax.
Mm-hmm.
Money to chamber, 30,000. Tourism and economic development is tied together like Michael Jordan and Scottie Pippen. So the 124 coming out of the 600,000, I don't know how that would be, why would we even consider waiting?
I think we're just trying to get some clarification on the language, because we're here in fund balance and we're here in hotel motel tax. So I think we're just trying to get everybody on the same page on that right now, but...
One thing too, Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and take the opportunity to acknowledge, under state law, I can vote on the budget if I acknowledge I am a county employee. So I am a county employee, just so that can go on the record. But I have submitted a letter previously during the Budget Committee meetings that I've requested the sheriff not include me in any of these pay raises. So just to go on the record again with that, in case anybody has a question with that. So just to go on the record again with that, in case anybody has a question with that. As far as the law director's question, uh, I kind of agree with ACDA being a tourism issue, but Commissioner Mays' points well taken. I mean, if we can just clear up the language on it, I just think that's a good place for those funds to come from to be able to do a better employee raise for those employees that Commissioner McCainy, uh, was speaking about earlier.
May I make a suggestion for cleaning up your language? Um, you're, you're marrying two actions and this might address Jay's concern. Your action is that you all are reducing the general fund appropriation for ACDA and you are going to pay the ACDA dues and the chamber dues out of the tourism fund. You could do that by asking tourism to reduce several line items, or the easiest way would be out of tourism's fund balance, which means, um, Ms. Wells does not have to tonight adjust any line items. And then that would be one motion. And then that frees up that amount of funding for a second motion, which would be to increase the employee raises for the two hundred thousand plus, uh, Commissioner Mays', or two percent and then Commissioner Mays's additional, um, fifty, so that EMS could also have an additional two percent. So maybe, Jay, would that clear that up?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay. That, maybe that's a good.
But I, I don't, I don't even think we have to delve into our budget line item to do that. Sounds like we could easily take care of both.
When, let me just ask for clarification. Jay, when the building sells, your opinion is that tourism would be, tourism fund balance would be reimbursed, any money that they spend on the building or maintenance, which we're estimating about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The remainder of those funds would go into the general fund. So is the, are those the funds that you're talking about using for the ACDA contribution?
Those are the, that, the balance, whatever is left, the residual, after we pay back the debt, the maintenance. I didn't calculate it to be that much. Um, I think you mentioned it was two hundred thousand. That one deed was only a hundred thousand.
It's a hundred thousand for the, um, construction of the building. I mean, I'm sorry, a hundred thousand for the property, two hundred thousand for the construction of the building, about seventy-five thousand that we spent additionally after the building was built.
Including your repairs and maintenance?
Yes.
Everything above that is profit that would go to the county, uh, at the discretion of the county legislative body.
So those are the funds that you're?
Yes, ma'am.
To use for the, for the contribution?
Oh, no, that's, that's what I'm saying. They're saying something a little bit different. But we're, we're getting to the same end result.
If I could just maybe take, so this came up in budget committee. I think honestly what Shane's trying to do, I think that some of the budget committee would like to see us, tourism make the ACDA payment and chamber payment now on. It doesn't really have anything to do with the extra two percent, but I think they would think that, you know, that's something that could come from tourism funds.
Could use some money.
Personally. I mean, that's what, the way I understood it in budget committee and that's the way I'm, I'm understanding it tonight. He, like the mayor said, he tied his motion in with the two percent raise, but I do feel like that, that is a payment they think tourism could make. I need to get these next two that have been waiting, but do you want to, do you need to restate your motion or anything, or do you, uh, you talked to Jay and the mayor?
Annette, did you get what the mayor was saying a minute ago?
What, what she said is, is, what she said is the most.
Yeah, what she said is the most. Can you? A fund balance from tourism to pay the ACDA contribution and the chamber contribution.
Which is one fifty-four, five hundred.
One fifty-four, five hundred.
Commissioner Foster.
So my, I'm all for the raises, absolutely. I think we should look at giving raises. My issue, this got brought up in budget the month before, never came to a motion, never got a second, never, and then the week, the month we passed the budget, this was not brought up. We passed tourism's budget without this in there. We passed the general fund without this in there. That's my only concern is that we didn't, I wasn't at the meeting where it was discussed. I watched it. I apologized when there, but then I was at the next following meeting. So that's my issue. I'm all for the raises, but, uh, and I, Robbie, I came by and saw you about a way to, you know, when that conversation came up, paying ACDA's out of their fund balance, said that we have for them, that's a million dollars plus using that for a one time. So that's my concern, um, that it didn't go through the proper process in my opinion.
Commissioner Isabel.
I met with, uh, the budget chairman, the finance director and the mayor. And what my thoughts were is this is a year of compensation. There's four commissioners that's been on here, or three longer than I have, and seen the real lean days. And we couldn't give raises and we used to give, you know, bonuses and things like that. But we've had substantial growth and I'd laid out a growth plan several years ago. And our growth is still on, is, is still ongoing. And you, what my suggestion was, was twenty percent raise to the sheriff's department, ten to everybody else. And let me tell you about the sheriff's department. Uh, it's probably about a month ago, I was listening to a debate where Cameron Sexton was talking about what was going on in Nashville and that they were, you know, wanting gun legislation, thinking that have gun legislation is going to solve the problems. And he was very blunt. He said, here's what solves your problems. Is your police force, your sheriff's department, that is who protects you at school, your students, protects you when you go to the grocery store, protects your neighborhoods. That's where you got, that's what you got to do. That's where it lays. The responsibility lays on all these people you see in the sea of green and the sheriff. If we have something tragic happen like what happened in Nashville, that lays on everybody out here. It's a big responsibility and I applaud these people for, for doing that. And what would they do for us right now? So I'm all in favor of that. Like I said, if it's up to me, I'd do a twenty-ten because it's a year of compensation and growth and we have growth ongoing. And employees are an investment. Those are returning on investment. If they're not returning on investment, then you get rid of them. That's what it is in business. That's, you know, pure fact.
Any, any other discussion on the motion before we go to the board and vote? Do you want to, uh, Commissioner Wondell?
I think you were getting ready to say, I just want to hear exactly what the motion is.
Say this first motion.
Thank you.
One more time and then we'll go to the board and vote.
Do you have it written down, Annette? Okay.
Now, we're stopped, stopped there, stopped there and then we'll, we'll, we'll do another motion to keep it, keep it clean. Yeah. All right, let's go to the board and, let's go to the board and vote. Uh, the motion is to use tourism fund balance to fund the ACDA and chamber donation of annual donation of a hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Twelve yes, two no, motion passes. Ready to make, got a motion, Commissioner Mays.
Yeah, I'll make them, uh. I do have a parliamentary question first.
Okay.
Robert, at this point, do we, I mean, do we need to make a motion to approve the budget, second it, and then have amendments on top from there?
That's what we've always done.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, um, to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, um, reflecting the changes, uh, that were voted on, uh, just a second ago. And then let me add one more parliamentary question because I don't want to mess this up. If there is another amendment, can I, can I add that in with my, this original motion? Or do we need just to get that on the floor for debate?
You could, you could make a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four budget with, with whatever you want to do.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve twenty-three, twenty-four budget with, uh, increasing employee pay raises from five percent to, uh, seven percent and adding fifty thousand dollars from ARP, uh, to EMS funding to allow them to have the two percent in their fund.
Got a motion? Yes, that's, that would be approving the budget with, with those changes. That's seconded by Commissioner Wells. Give Annette just a second to get that. Commissioner Wondell.
Mr. Chairman, I think Commissioner Allen has a question maybe, uh, but, and, and Commissioner Mays addressed it too. So the motion gets put out on the floor to approve the budget. Now we can make amendments if there's amendments to be made. So I think Commissioner Allen was thinking that once we approved this motion, it was over. I, I don't know that, but, but, but I was just, I want to make sure you're and everyone's aware, we can make additional amendments to the budget.
Right.
But this is the proper process as Commissioner Wondell said.
Can you speak in your mic for people at home?
I do, you know, like the budget as it is, uh, pay raises for people, but there is an item in the budget that I don't want to vote for. And so, uh, me not voting for the budget doesn't mean that I don't want you guys to have raises. But, you know, I don't think the taxpayers want to fund, uh, uh, these books in the library. So that's my vote no on the budget because I don't think that the taxpayers want to fund the sexually explicit books in the library. So my vote no is in protest to taxpayer-funded, uh, smut in our libraries. But I will, you know, vote for your raises, but the, but for the budget itself, I'm not for that part of it because of that issue with me.
Any discussion, any amendments? This, this is, this would, Annette, do you have the, do you have the motion recorded from Commissioner Mays? Uh, yeah. Yes, from ARPA for the EMS. Commissioner Mays, that, that sound right? Commissioner McCainy.
Road Superintendent just walked in. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, appreciate what you do. And we're going to pass this budget with a seven percent raise with no additional funding for the highway department employees. Is that correct? That's what we're about to vote on? I mean, that's the way I, the gist I get of the motion.
Yes.
Pardon me? Well, that, okay. I just want the clarification. And additional funding for the seven percent raise even in my department. Revenue increase coming from where? Pardon me? From my money, but the ambulance department, these other departments going to get additional funding for the raise and we're not? Is my question, it's pretty plain and simple, I think. I may be confused.
EMS department has the deficit about budget with a five percent raise of forty, no, with a seven of forty-four thousand, two ninety-one. I mean, the highway department, even with a seven percent raise, you still have a hundred and thirty thousand dollar surplus budget.
We're not talking about the surplus. We're talking about additional funding for the raises as a revenue.
That is the money that would cover the raises. That covers.
We've always had a little money to cover the raises, but we don't, we're not receiving any additional money for the raises, is what I'm talking about. In other words, if I was broke, you would give me additional money for the funding of the raises? Is that what we're getting at? Question?
Commissioner. I guess McCainy, you've still got the floor.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm talked out. I'm waiting on an answer. Robbie?
Yes, sir.
My question was, the five percent, is that coming out of the highway department's budget?
Yes.
And we're doing the whole seven percent for the EMS? With the?
With Tyler's motion, every, every fund is getting a seven percent. I don't think he meant it just for the general fund.
No, I didn't. I thought yours was for EMS, your amendment earlier to the first motion.
The additional funding for EMS was because they would, there would be a shortage. And to, to, this, I, I'll, I'll speak after you have, I know you have the floor. I'm sorry.
So where could we get money to fund highway department? Could we use ARP money for that?
That's what y'all want to do. You can, but they have money in their budget to cover a seven percent raise.
Everybody has a fund balance, but.
Yeah, not everybody. No, not everybody does.
Well, everybody except the ambulance service, I think.
That's the reason they were given additional funding from ARP is they can't support a seven percent raise.
What's the highway department fund balance? If the budget is approved as presented?
Right now, it's less than a million dollars, but when the money rolls, it usually is around two to three million. I don't think it'll be that high this year.
No, it won't be that high this year. We spent, we're, I'm sorry, start to say something out of line. But, yeah. And what would the two percent from five to two cost for the highway department?
I would add that the highway department is getting an additional three million from the state of Tennessee this year.
Well, I appreciate that.
And highway department, un, unlike, um, the other departments, is not required to receive property tax or sales tax, but yet does receive both of those local contributions. That is why EMS does not have the ability, they're the one department that does not have the ability to fund those pay raises. So.
Thank you for that acknowledgement that money from state is for pay, is not pay raises. We do have money and, uh, we do get some money from local option sales tax, have over the years and we've almost always had a fund balance and we're not a revenue generating department.
So two more percent increase in highways, twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty thousand?
Yeah.
Handle that? Can I handle it? Yes, sir. Okay.
Commissioner Mays.
That was just a question I was going to ask.
Other discussion on Commissioner Mays' motion. Commissioner Allen.
Why can't we not separate these, these two issues? That we can vote on the budget and then add, uh, Commissioner Mays', uh, amendments? That's on the clean budget without the, uh, amendments and then come back and vote on his amendments.
Well, I mean, he didn't really have an amendment. It's just passed the budget with, with one extra funding thing. So it's not really an amended. Commissioner?
The motion that's on the floor is to approve the budget as submitted with that one change.
With those, yeah.
And then anything else that needs to be added has to be amended before, but we can't vote on this because that settles it.
Once we pass it, we pass it. Right. Yeah.
And, uh, I have a, an amendment also I'd like to make. And that's to increase the, uh, EMS fund, two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for a twelve-hour day truck in the Claxton community.
Increase it, uh, from, I mean, increase out of what? Out of this, the assigned fund balance? Is that, I guess the, or with ARPA funds?
We could find the money to do that. I think we could use ARP money. That would be my.
Let's, I don't want to lose track of anything. Will you hit, can you hit the amendment? Do we have that? We don't have that. Don't have that, never mind. Okay. So we've got an amendment. Commissioner Wondell.
Commissioner McCainy, this point, I, I thought the mayor had indicated we could potentially use, uh, the opioid, opioid funds to help fund that request. For the twelve-hour units for.
Um, I, that is one source. I don't, I don't have those numbers with me. I know the Johnson and Johnson, um, that was the damages was a hundred and fifty-four thousand. And then there are a few, I think there are three, or there are five on that first sheet with the damages. I, I don't know that it gets to the two hundred. You could definitely say two hundred thousand and then the difference from. You could definitely say two hundred thousand and then the difference from ARP.
Okay.
I feel confident that that amount is there, and then it would, and it still leaves some, and then the, the other pot that is not the subdivision funds, the future funds, there's four hundred and twenty-five thousand in that. That's a completely separate pot of money.
What, what code are we putting those funds in currently?
They're in a revenue code. We get, we were given special codes for the opioid funds.
Can we reference those codes?
One of them is, I just saw it on here, sorry. So the one the mayor's talking about, that's four hundred and twenty-five thousand one fifty-nine is revenue code four six eight four five. I think that's the one that has the more restrictions.
Yes, that's the one for, we really need to focus on future programming and, and all of those things.
The other has two hundred and thirty-three thousand, and I've lost the code here, I'll find it in just a second, if you'll give me a minute.
Commissioner McCain is, why he's looking, is that acceptable to you to use this two hundred and thirty-three thousand?
Four eight nine nine one, revenue code, general fund one oh one four eight nine nine one, two hundred and thirty-three thousand four twenty-one.
So I'm not as quick as you.
Sorry.
What was the, the code we need to reference to pull those funds?
One oh one four eight nine nine one, it's opioid settlement funds from the past. We've broken that down into two different revenues now, and that has a balance of two thirty-three, four twenty-one, thirty-two.
So that was one oh one four eight nine one?
Four eight nine nine one.
Nine nine one, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And that's two thirty-three.
Four twenty-one and thirty-two cents.
So my amendment would be two hundred thousand from the opioid settlement and fifty-six thousand ARP funds.
Do you need a second on that amendment, or do we just?
You have a second?
Yeah, so you need a, do we have a second on?
Second.
Commissioner Wondell seconds it, so we'll vote on that amendment. Commissioner Bochamp.
Yes, I want to say, now we've put myself in a situation where I'm not going to support this because there's a lot more that happened with opioid addiction than EMS with Narcan, going to somebody's house because they overdose. We have a whole generation of things that have come through our court system with domestic violence, people getting theft charges, people at the jail having to deal with them. There's a whole line that I've dealt with for almost eleven years with opioid addiction. Families have lost loved ones, they keep coming through the court system. Mental health is a huge problem here, and I can't sit here and vote to spend out a lot of this opioid money just for EMS when we need to be using it over here, starting mental health facilities, extra drug rehab, which works, they're going through drug court and it works. Our goal should be trying to get people off opioids instead of promoting, keep doing them, get Narcan, save your life. And I mean, I know that sounds harsh, but the reality, reality is, I'm over here every day for eleven years seeing what this pandemic, epidemic, whatever you want to call it, has done to families in Anderson County. So I'm not going to sit here and vote for opioid money to go to EMS. That's ridiculous.
And this is just the amendment right now. Commissioner Mays.
Yeah, just really quick, to Commissioner Bochamp's point, that initially was a concern that I had, but when you, what made me at ease and comfort with this is when you separate the two pots of money, that the, I think the pot of money that has the majority of the funds is for the programs and the things that you would like to see, and that I think all of us would like to see in the community, whether it be drug education, rehab, or, you know, the list goes on and on, because I would be like you, if it was out of that, I wouldn't support that. But looking at it and separating the two, I, I do support this because it wouldn't touch funds that would help community education and programs that we desperately need. So I was in the same boat, but I don't know if that gives you any comfort or anything, but that's why I support this now, just because of the differentiation there.
Okay, any discussion on Commissioner McCain's amendment? Just second about Commissioner Wondell, okay. Let's go to the board, we're going to vote on this amendment only, then when we come back, I need Commissioner Mays and Wells to make the motion second again for the regular one, taking amendments one at a time. Any?
We need a repeat.
Okay, Commissioner McCain's amendment is to, you want to state that?
Increase EMS budget with two hundred and fifty-six thousand to allow for a twelve-hour day truck in the Claxton community, with two hundred thousand coming from the opioid settlement, fifty-six thousand coming from ARP funds. Does not affect the tax rate.
Everybody understand the amendment? Commissioner Isbell.
There's still more money to come in and, and separate it.
For eighteen years.
For eighteen years, and that can be set up as far as, because I agree with Commissioner Bochamp, that there's so many things that need to be set up, and we can start planning for that.
Actually, our biggest case has not been decided yet, that's on the nuisance issue. That's the one I spoke to you about, about the large judgment out of Ohio on the same basic legal theory, so that one's still out there also.
And that could be in the millions.
It could be, never know.
Commissioner Foster. One thing too, to say, the opioid funds, the four hundred and seventy-five thousand pot, we, I have to restrict that at, at the end of the year, so it goes in a restricted fund, and it also, that amount of money draws interest, so, and that has to be restricted as well. So that, the other pot is, has a lot less restrictions, and, and that doesn't mean it can't be used for that, I'm just saying it doesn't have to be restricted, so. Commissioner Foster.
Yeah, that's my concern, is that we're about to use one-time money to fund now to increase a revenue, a reoccurring cost from four hundred and fifty thousand dollars debt to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's my biggest concern. I'm, like I said, I think there's some things we need to look at from EMS, we've talked about it in budget, that we'd like to put a committee together to see how we can, what those issues are, how we can fix it, so that gap is not continuing, we get to the budget and going, oh, we're at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars again next year, or seven hundred thousand dollars and we can't give raises. So that's, that's why I'll be voting no on that amendment.
Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I am in support of this amendment. I've done, you know, a lot of studies on this opioid and spoke with the mayor several instances, and we've talked about it, but I can see more money coming in, and will definitely support the other programs, but I am in support of this amendment.
Commissioner Vandergriff.
I'm not going to support this amendment, and I think I was very vocal about it in the last commission meeting. I do understand that by the, the letter of the law that we can use this, that this is an appropriate use, I do, I do get that, but I really just feel strongly that if, that we shouldn't be giving this money away before we've even had a task force to, to talk about it, to talk and to get community input for what we should do with this money, what, what is, what's going to be best for our community, what are going to keep people from needing to call EMS? So again, I, I'm going to, I'm going to vote no on that. I would be open to the discussion if we would go to the, through the task force and then bring it to the budget committee at, at another time later on, that we could, we could use that money to support the ambulance in Claxton.
Commissioner Smallridge.
I have some of the same concerns that Commissioner Vandergriff and Commissioner Bochamp have, have mentioned. We really not had a lot of discussion about these funds. The other thing, I, we're talking about locating the truck in the Claxton community, that's another, we haven't had a lot of discussion about what would be the best approach overall for EMS in, in terms of service, so I, I'm, I'm going to vote no on this too.
Commissioner McCain.
Mr. Chairman, our budgets go from year to year. I know Commissioner Foster mentioned about a recurring expense. My thinking is that after this year, we'll have enough data to determine whether or not we need an additional twenty-four hour ambulance, and that's why I'm willing to go with the twelve-hour right now, so that we can gather data and see if it is actually needed in the Claxton community with, and, and I'm all for a task force, I'd be glad to be on a task force about ambulance service. I do know a little bit about it, so if you, if you could see your way clear to vote for this amendment for one year, and like I said, our budgets are only year to year, don't, we don't go into the future year on, on the budget. This budget is for this year. If at the end of this budget, when we start talking about the new budget, we'll, we'll just slap it in, and we may not need the truck, you know. But I want to do it for one year, and, and gather enough data to see if it's actually needed, and I think the EMS director can, can provide figures for us sometime within the next six months, and so kind of let us know how it's going over there, and what kind of run, and what time of the day they're needed to vote, and things like that. But this would be for one year only.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I certainly respect those who have spoke against this, but, you know, I, I keep hearing the same pattern about, needs to go to committee, needs to go to committee, needs to go to committee. I, in theory, I get that, but today, tonight, this evening, we're here to do business, and I would argue, people are dying today, so we need to react today. This motion does not place the unit in Claxton or put it in a building. This only gives, apparently, according to Director Sweet, extra coverage that will enable the department to help reduce the, the Code Whites, which means no service at times. So to me, the best thing we can do as a body is respond to funds we have in the bank and provide it to our EMS, our department, our emergency responders, so they can respond to take care of the problems we currently have. I mean, we all can sit around and let the money build up and collect interest and hope that it stays, we'll all, we seem to have a hard time to agree on a budget, let alone how we're going to setting up drug courts, setting up drug facilities. I imagine that's going to be a two or three-year process. So I would like to see us consider taking care of the people today. I can vouch in Claxton that people are on the verge of dying, and yeah, they got to get Narcan, they sure do, and unfortunately, it's got to come from the sheriff, the Clax, the volunteer fire departments, or EMS. I prefer to see our people live. I prefer to see us fund that and take care of them. Look, we're not advocating take all the funds, no one here has said we're taking all the funds. It's two hundred and thirty thousand dollars we're asking for out of funds that are sitting there doing nothing. So I'm not mad at my committees, they have their opinions, I have mine, they'll vote against it, and I'll respect them, I'll still love them, but I'm going to vote for it because I'd like to address the concerns. It's not just been overnight, we've been talking about Claxton EMS unit, it seems like it's been going on for two years, but, you know, I, I'll vote for it, those against it can vote against it, and we can move on. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the amendment? All right, let's go to the board and vote. Yes is to amend passing the, but we're not passing the budget yet, this is to amend the budget with a two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar increase to staff a twelve-hour truck, an additional twelve-hour truck for EMS. Nine yes, five no, motion passes, or the amendment passes. All right, now if we can go back, Commissioner Mays and Wells, if you can make your motion in a second. Back to discussing the budget, passage of the budget with Commissioner McCain's amendment. Any other discussion? Commissioner McCain.
Include the seven percent for county employees and not the five.
Correct, yes. Commissioner White.
Let me give clarification. My, my understanding, so all the way long is, is that the Highway Department's five percent increase was going to come out of the same monies that the general population was going to get. But I understand now that it's not.
None of the fund, so if you have part of the tax levy, you have to support your own fund, unless you want to change what goes in the tax levy or give ARP funds, each fund is supporting their own raise except EMS because they can't. But yes, the Highway Department would be paying for their raise, like the library, like tourism.
I just thought it was odd when Mr. Long said if he didn't, if he didn't have any money, that we probably would fund it.
Yeah, because I'm sure they'd like to see every, every one get the same seven percent raise.
Well, maybe that's the fair way to do it, it just seems like it's not fair to me, that, that we're going to give five hundred and forty county employees a raise, and we're going to, we're going to fund that with monies that we have, but then the Highway Department, whether they've got twenty-five or thirty or forty employees, we're going to vote to give them a raise, but they're going to have to pay for their raise.
Well, all the, each department's paying for their raise.
I understand.
The general fund's paying for the general fund employees, library's paying for the library employees with their fund balance and the money they get, I mean, that's, it's not just the Highway, it's all funds. I mean, the Highway, it's single, that's Gary came up here and spoke, but it's every fund, it's supporting their own percentage raise. Thank you. Commissioner McCain.
One more question, can we use the additional twenty thousand out of ARP funds for the Highway Department?
That definitely could be done, yes.
Well, I'd like to amend it to include the twenty thousand ARP funds for the Highway Department.
Okay, we've got an amendment, in a second. Commissioner Isbell.
Mr. Chairman, following what Finance Director says, that everybody's responsible for their own, and if we're stepping out of bounds, then we should go ahead and fund everybody else, because why would we fund one and not fund tourism and library and everybody else? That's my question.
Commissioner Mays.
Robbie, you said that Mr. Long, and I, and Gary may can answer it too, but there was a hundred and thirty thousand dollar surplus in the budget. Is that correct?
Yes, I mean, you all have, in your packet, you had a page that showed each department's projected fund balance, which I do have the Highway Department too high, but their budgeted revenues are nine million, three hundred and ten thousand, five fifty-four, which does include the three million from the state, so it's normally not that large of a budget, it's normally around six million, and expenditures at nine million, one seventy-nine, eight sixty-nine. That's not what was in your packet, I'm sorry, that's the seven percent one, but anyway, that has, even with a seven percent raise, there's still a hundred and thirty thousand six eighty-five of a revenues over budget, over expenditures.
And, I mean, I guess our, is this, I mean, are we having this discussion because we gave it to EMS and not to anybody else? I, I mean, is that really where we're at? I mean, I, I know that people want to be fair, but I would encourage the armchair quarterbacks who sit in the hall to, to call the state of, across the state of Tennessee and ask how much EMS is being subsidized. Go to Rutherford County, ask how much they're getting subsidized. Go to Dixon County, ask how much they're subsidizing their EMS. And I would also ask, you know, Gary does a great job as our, our road superintendent, but no one in this room can sit here and say that we have not adequately funded Mr. Long's request over the years. He's getting three million dollars from the state, you got two point two million dollars of ARP money, he's up until this year had a very, very healthy fund balance, and the only thing that we're asking is for twenty extra thousand dollars. If that's what it takes to get his employees seven percent, then I'll vote for it, but I just, it just, it blows my mind that we're talking about a surplus budget and, because I'm, I, I agree, if we're going to pay, if we're going to give twenty thousand dollars to Mr. Long out of ARP, then let's give it to everybody else and not take it out of their, their budget, because, you know, and, and I'm not going to sit here and try to, to listen to why the EMS budget's in a deficit, or, or try to tackle that or indict Nathan on anything here tonight, because I think it's, it's out of line and it's uncalled for. out of line and it's uncalled for. And yeah, he has a deficit, but you know, the Budget Committee approved his budget. We approved to, to make up that deficit. You know, I would just ask that we call across the state and find out how many are getting subsidized, but also how many state road departments are getting the amount of sales tax and other funding out in appropriations from commission. I'm all for that, but $20,000, I mean, come on.
Mr. Long.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioner Tyler. And actually, back to the same impression that was given up till tonight that we were having additional funding for these raises, which you're talking about 20. Well, I'm already absorbing 50,000 to get to 5%. That's quick enough for you. And the 3 million we're talking about, that's over a three-year expenditure. He's got it reflected in this one year, but we got three years and it's gonna come in, but we've got three years to spend it on certain roads, and it's not for raises or equipment. And if I had projected it over my expenditures for $400,000, we'd have been 300, and 320-something thousand dollars short, would you have funded me additional money to get me balanced? No.
I don't know how you, you know.
That's what we, that's what, that's the program we're sitting, we're presenting here tonight, and you all have proved it, a budget that comes in unfunded, but that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if Mr. Long is, I, Mr. Chairman, I, listen, I don't know. Here's what I would like to see across the county, is our, is our mayors be our mayors, our sheriffs be our sheriffs, our road departments be our road department, and our circuit court clerk be our...
Okay, let's stick to the amendment. Do you have any more comments on the amendment right now?
That's my comment. If, I'll, you know, if the board wants to go with giving him 20,000 out of ARP funds, then let's knock it out, because his employees deserve it just as much as anybody else does.
Commissioner Isbell. Okay. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote on this amendment is to take $20,000 of ARP money to, for the road department raises. Seven yes, seven no. Motion fails.
Thank you.
Amendment fails. All right. Commissioner Mays, can you hit the, Mays and Commissioner Wells there? Okay. Back to the approval of the budget. Do we have any other discussion on the, Commissioner Wondell?
Before we approve the budget, I'd like to ask this young man, I forget his name again, but I know his face. He's been very well spoken from day one on his concerns as an employee within the Sheriff's Department. He answered us last time at the Budget Committee. I'd like to hear him one last time if he would come up and tell us what his thoughts are of the proposed budget for the Sheriff's Department as we move forward, if that's okay with you.
Yes, sir.
And state your name, I apologize.
Deputy Colt Jennings.
Thank you.
Concerning the budget, the last time that I spoke to you in the meeting, I said it's a good foundation, be that. But we have a house to build. I don't think it stops here. I hope that you all vote to approve it, but as the sheriff's already said, surrounding counties, five, six, seven thousand dollars ahead of us, and that's taken into account benefit.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? All right, if not, let's go to the board and vote. This is, yes is to approve the budget with, as amended. Motion passes.
I think we've done a good job.
On behalf of the Anderson County Sheriff's Office, we truly do appreciate you guys. Thank you.
We appreciate you. But to all the, you know, the old timers on here, you remember when we used to have to do tax anticipation loans to try to get us through the year? We've come a long one. We really have. Thank you.
So Chairman Anderson, so we have two resolutions that need to be passed tonight. Obviously appropriation resolution has just changed, so I can go downstairs and fix that one, but the tax levy appropriation is still the same, so it can be approved tonight.
Is that your motion to approve the tax levy right now?
That's appropriation, 2301119. I'm sorry.
If I make a motion to approve the...
Tax levy resolution and appropriation resolution as amended. Will that take care of both of them? Or do you want the two separate?
Why don't we take a, take a 10-minute break and let Robbie get the new numbers?
I might need a little bit more than 10 minutes.
We'll come back. 15-minute break, yeah.
...
...